We'll rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
As we take roll, we'll note that Mrs. Grimm could not make it tonight. And executive sessions, we did have an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss personnel. We'll move into public comment. I have two forms for public comment. I will go through them first, and then as always, if somebody didn't turn in a form and wants to make public comment, you're always welcome to. So I'll take these in no particular order. We have Brianna Robinson.
I'm here as a mom tonight. I think Mr. Leach kind of on Facebook one day posted something, and I was like, ah, he got ahead of me about talking about the teachers that your children had that made a difference? Yes. What I did was I prepared my speech ahead of time in hopes that I get through this without getting choked up. So, thank you for letting me speak this evening. As each one of my children graduated from Pots Grove, I resisted the urge to speak, waiting for them all to complete their education before speaking publicly about their experiences. All three of my children had different strengths and weaknesses, all came with different personalities and attitudes, and all required different supports. I want to take a few minutes to share the impact Pots Grove faculty has had on my children. Prior to this evening, I asked my children to think the three most influential teachers from their academic careers here at Pots Grove and the reasons. It was a really hard thing. We talked about it for a long time, but in the end, for my son, he said it was Mr. Christ, Mr. Clark, and Mrs. Serkowski. Mrs. Serkowski was the teacher who welcomed John to Pots Grove and provided him with the supports needed in order to be successful in school. She provided him with a safe, comfortable learning environment where he could be successful. Mr. Clark and Mr. Christ instilled in John the value of learning. While he may not have been the top student, these two teachers taught him to care about learning, which he still carries with him today. When Hannah answered the same question, she replied with, Mr. Towson, Mr. Christ, and Mr. Clark, and she wanted to give a special shout out to Mrs. Cash, Mr. Bannister, and Mr. Sprawl. Mr. Towson challenged Hannah in ways she still remembers today. He encouraged her to think for herself, and she benefited immensely from his approach in the classroom. Hannah was quieter in school, especially as she got older. She was a difficult child to get to know, and as she got older, she struggled with the purpose of education and how it impacted her life. When she sat in Mr. Clark's class, she became incredibly passionate about learning. She was inspired with the fact that Mr. Clark encouraged thinking and learning for learning's sake. He presented her with the purpose of education and that she has used, or that she was unable to find before them. As she continued through high school, she took his philosophy and approached all of her classes with a mindset of learning for learning's sake, which is a philosophy that Mr. Christ had also seemed to believe. Cassidy is my final child, graduated from Pots Grove this year, and when she was asked the same question, she struggled to name only three. Cassidy needed a lot of supports through her educational career, including teachers, counselors, and administrators. She tried to narrow it down to the best of her ability, but she wasn't able to. Just three, so she has a list. Cassidy's teachers included Mrs. Girloff, Mr. Kinkay, Mrs. Frasca, Mr. Mazzarelli, and Mrs. Campbell. She also knows, although she didn't care to attach herself to the label, that she would never have been successful if it weren't for Mr. Kirchner and Mrs. Schott helping her to navigate her way. Cass said that Mrs. Girloff found a way to work within her limits while getting her to achieve and make gains academically. Mr. Kinkay was the person who made it possible for Cassidy to get through middle school. He was her cheerleader, her ear, her support, and the one that found the path she needed in order to be successful in school. Mrs. Frasca provided a secure environment where Cass could develop confidence and learn to push herself academically. Mr. Mazzarelli was the most influential teacher in Cassidy's career because, in her words, she felt he was the first teacher that didn't treat her differently because of her diagnosis. He knew when to push her and when to back off. He taught her to share her opinions, trust her opinions, and value her opinions. He encouraged her to write and think. He told her that her effort was commendable and that he valued her commitment to learning. Even after leaving his room, he still made it a point to communicate with her and had her communicate back. And he would make it a point to inquire about her opinions of world happenings because he knew that those topics mattered to her. Mrs. Campbell provided an environment where Cass felt safe to share her academic and personal struggles, allowing to her to be as successful as possible. Even when Campbell wasn't her teacher, she still made sure Cass could always reach her. Cass knew she could trust her and that Campbell had her back. Mr. Kirchner and Mrs. Schott were the behind-the-scenes teachers that made sure everyone knew what Cassidy needed in order for her to be successful in her time here at Pots Grove. They worked with a girl who said very little or nothing at all for years, trying to provide the support she needed to manage academics. This isn't to say that these are the only teachers who had a positive impact on my children because there were many. It was a challenge to get them to choose a few, but I can give you the common thread with all of the teachers we talked about. These teachers empowered my children. These teachers taught because they valued learning, not to get a proficient score on a standardized test. These teachers let my children know they mattered. These teachers went out of their way to develop relationships with my children, which was quite a feat with a couple of my kids. These teachers taught my children that their voices mattered even if they were in the minority with their opinions. My children learned academics in all of their classes, but notice nobody in my family said, that teacher taught me about specific wars, that teacher taught me how to build an environmentally friendly city, or that teacher taught me how to take a standardized test. No, they left Pots Grove with bigger, more important life lessons that have provided them with a strong foundation in order to be successful adults and citizens. They learned that learning is to be valued. They learned that their voices matter. They learned to think critically. They learned that thinking for themselves is imperative for success and peace of mind. They learned that a diagnosis does not define you. They learned that it is okay to be passionate about learning. So while I fully understand that for the school board and administrators, the primary focus has to and often comes back to test scores because of government mandates. As a parent, I am thrilled that in the classrooms within our schools in Pots Grove, the teachers are focusing on developing passionate, confident, lifelong learners while being sure to prepare the children for all of the mandated testing that is part of our current educational environment. My children are three of thousands who attend or have attended Pots Grove schools, and I know how fortunate I am that my children have had their lives molded and positively influenced by such caring, dedicated, passionate educators. That being said, I bought this fantastic book. Hooray for different do for day. It's a wonderful book for all of the teachers to read because it teaches that if we teach children how to think, any test is possible. So, thank you.
Thank you. We have Tana Reinhardt.
Hi, I'm here representing the Potts County Relay for Life, and I just want to thank you again for allowing us to use your school facilities. We actually have my nan as heading out books. Our team projects this year were programs. Each team, we ask them to write their own biography of their team and why they relay. So we wanted to give you each a copy as a thank you for allowing us to use the facilities, and we hope to continue our partnership in the future. And Ross was our grand marshal, and he did a fabulous job.
There we go. All right, thank you. Thank you all for letting us use.
Thank you.
Mr. Alexander, usually at this time, it's when Mrs. Grimm pipes in with a motion for next year, but she's not here today. So I'm going to make the motion that we approve the use of the facilities for the relay for next year.
Means you have to come back. No, I meant, I meant you have to come back next year. You could stay.
No, thank you very much. We do appreciate it. You guys have great facilities. Students were great. We had some help. Like Mrs. Kohler was there helping out. We greatly appreciate any help, and I hope that if you didn't get to go out, if you come out and join us, because it is a fun time. Thank you. And also, my son does go to Pots Grove, and he has such wonderful teachers at West Pots Grove. Thank you.
Thanks. And so we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Can I all? I also wanted to just make a comment about Mrs. Robinson's speech, and I noticed that most of the teachers that were listed were middle and high school teachers, which isn't really surprising given that she asked students who were much closer to middle and high than they were to elementary. But in honor of Mrs. Robinson and all the other wonderful elementary teachers, you know, I think if you asked a sixth grader or seventh grader that question, you would get a completely different list and also a very well-thought-out one. So I just want to point out that it starts at K, and we have excellent teachers in this school district all the way through. Maybe when my son graduates, I'll do a list that includes some of them.
Okay. Moving on to some presentations and recognitions. It's going to be my honor and privilege tonight to recognize retirees tonight. What I'd like to do, so that I want to put you in the spotlight. So I'm going to introduce you all individually. I want you to come up front, stand as a unit, okay? I think that's important. And then we'll do, we have a gift for you from the school district regarding honoring that retirement. So I'm going to start with some information regarding Sarah Patero. Cheryl, if you would come up. You can maybe stand, you can face the crowd and the board. Yeah, right. This is great. Yeah, sure. Super. Why not? Front and center. There you go. This is Cheryl, everybody. Cheryl has been an elementary librarian for the district since November of 1978. During the years, she has always created a warm and friendly library experience and has helped countless students foster their love for reading. Cheryl was a bit apprehensive about retiring, but the idea has grown on her. She is now looking forward to relaxing with friends and family and maybe even learning to cook. Please welcome Cheryl. Congratulate her. You told our people, and our people got me the message. Yes, yes. Bernadette Keely. That's right. Perfect. Yes, there's no wrong answers here tonight. Bernadette was hired in September of 1986 as a first-grade teacher at Lower Pots Grove. She has also taught fourth grade and most recently second grade at Ringing Rocks. Bernadette is always happy to share stories about her grandchildren and is looking forward to spending more time with them. She is also committed to assisting the elderly and be working and will be working with senior citizens after she retires. Bernadette Keely, congratulations. Terry Minato. Terry was hired in September of 1989 as a first-grade teacher at West Pots Grove, and she has remained in that position until retirement. She has been the grade-one coordinator at West, sponsored many after-school clubs, and has been an after-school tutor and summer school teacher for many years. Terry loves teaching and being with her students, but is looking forward to spending time traveling around the country with her husband in their new motorhome and being with her two granddaughters. Terry Minato. Mark Schuster will not be with us tonight, but I would like to read some information on Mark. Mark has taught at Pots Grove High School since September of 1983. He has also been the freshman and senior class advisor, SNAP leader, department chair, and assistant swim coach. Mark is looking forward to spending time at the beach with his family and friends and sharing his experiences with his grandson. Mark Schuster. And last but not least, Beverly Yancek. Bev, come on up. Bev joined the Pots Grove School District as a special education teacher in September of 1991 after working several years for Montgomery County Intermediate Unit. In addition to her teaching duties, Bev has been the department chair and involved in field hockey programs, serving as an assistant coach for many years. During her retirement, she is looking forward to traveling and doing a lot, variety of fun activities. Ladies and gentlemen, how about a great round of applause for our retirees? Dr. Ziegler, did you get a picture? We'd also like to recognize our student board rep for her service this year. Maya Steele. Maya, how about you just come around? I think it's important you stand up. You're recognized. On behalf of the Pots Grove School District Administration and Board of School Directors, we would like to present Maya Steele with a plaque, and I'll get that in a second, as an appreciation for her service as our school board rep for the 1617 school year. Maya will be attending UCLA in the fall to study philosophy, politics, and economics. You'll be exhausted. Maya has been ranked in the top 10 of her class for all four years here at Pots Grove High School. She is the president of the community service group Spark the Wave and serves as treasurer of the environmental club, as well as a variety of activities that keeps her very busy. She's been a member of the school orchestra for the past nine years. As you can see, a wide variety of activities has given Maya a wonderful perspective to serve as our student board rep. On behalf of all of us, Maya, congratulations, best of luck, and we thank you for your service. Thank you for your patience with that. Obviously, anytime we have the opportunity to honor our own, it's time well spent, and it's a great reflection on us as individuals, what we do. And I'm just, obviously, it's a proud moment for us. So thank you all for coming and your years of service. Best luck and wishes. Okay. Moving on to approval of the minutes. Our recommendation is to approve the monthly board actions for May 9th as submitted.
I'll motion that we approve the monthly board action minutes for May 9th and May 23rd as submitted.
Second. Motion in a second. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving forward to receiving for the counts. Mr. Nestor.
Yes, we need, excuse me, we need a motion to accept the high school accounts, the middle school accounts, and the cafeteria accounts as presented.
Motion in a second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Yep. We need a motion to approve the payment of invoices in the amount of $3,754,780.65 for May 2017 as presented.
Motion in a second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
And finally, we need a motion to approve the treasures report for May of 2017 as presented and to file it for audit.
We have a motion in a second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great. Motion. Thank you. At this point in time, we'd like to move on to the report of the superintendent, and we would like our student board reps to report out, please.
Hi, everyone. As the year comes in, and I kind of just want to wrap up what has been going on. In both the high school and middle school, we've had award assemblies for all grades. This is kind of just to say, you did an amazing job this year in terms of academics, like what you've been involved in. We had the senior awards as well, which is a little more involved, and as they go off to college and really honor the top, the best of the best. Along with that, we recently had our senior class trip to Disney. I personally went on it, and it was one of the most amazing experiences. I recommend that if you have any kids that are in middle school or above, like them to go on it their senior year. It's nice to see as you become a senior, just like how you will miss your class and the sentimentality of it all. And also, along with that, graduation is this Friday. I'm assuming I'll see most of your faces, so. And lastly, I kind of just want to talk about, yesterday I had a meeting with Dr. Ziegler, and I was to talk about like how this position was rewarding and like what we can do to improve upon it. So again, I just want to say that this has been one of the most rewarding positions I've had and has taught me a lot in terms of communication skills, professionalism, networking, how local politics works, how to effectively represent a large body of people, and also just what it means to give back to your community. I want to thank not only you, the board, but also administration, teachers, and parents for always supporting the students at Pots Grove School District. Along with that, in terms of how we can improve upon it, we found, Mason and I found that as a high school student, you're busy, you have work, extracurricular activities. A lot of it is timing, and what we found is that I gave the suggestion of creating a service learning class for the student representatives so that they would have like a class period like every other day to visit more schools, to talk to students, and work on like individual issues so that they can report out more effectively at these meetings. Along with that, we found that we were going to have a summer session to introduce the position and kind of have clear expectations of what the job entails so that we are more organized in terms of the beginning of the school year and how we go about it the first meeting. Because it is, Mason has more experience now that we added a junior representative, but as a, once you come into this position, you, it might be a little scary at first. Along with that, we are going to have a set-in schedule we're going to make during the summer that will be a pre-planned in terms of what school districts, what schools you'll go to. So we'll, the student representatives are going to try to visit like West Pots Grove Lower, all of them, instead of just like saying the high school because that's what we know best. But in terms of what we're representing, we're representing all of the schools in the district, which is hard in terms of timing and all that. And I also gave the suggestion of making it mandatory to attend at least four committee meetings as that is where most of the details are involved versus the school board meetings where they're more like generalized and kind of reporting out on everything. And lastly, just to have better communication with, in our school district, in terms of the other schools, as well as other districts, so that it's a more collaborative effort. But again, thank you so much for this opportunity. Thank you. As a board, you do a whole lot, and I hope to see you sometime later. So, thank you.
All right. Well said. I don't know how I can follow up with that. So I'm just going to, I just wanted to thank all the staff and all the schools for a great year. I just wanted to wish everybody a great summer too. And then just, yeah, this year was great, but I'll just go through the different schools. So Ringing Rocks had their field day. That was on June 5th. And I know West Pots Grove had their Good Citizen Luncheon. That was on June 9th. And basically, in all the elementary schools, they've already had all their award ceremonies. So it's good to recognize accomplishments throughout the year, and then hopefully they can, you know, proceed into the next year too. So yeah, thank you all for a great year.
Do you have any questions or anything?
I actually do. When is senior walk?
Senior walk is tomorrow.
Okay. And all the students are still going to be there for finals and stuff?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, finals are over in terms of seniors, and then.
Right. Yeah, that I know, but the rest of the student body. Okay.
I don't have a question, just a comment. I wanted to say thank you. I think you did a wonderful job this year. You have been ultra-prepared at every meeting from the time you interviewed through tonight, and I think you did an outstanding job. I'm glad to hear that it was a rewarding experience for you, and I'm also glad to hear such well-thought-out feedback for how we can make the program better for years to come for students. I can't say thanks enough. I think you did a great job, and I just wanted to wish you the best of luck. UCLA, that's pretty great. So enjoy it, and I hope you took something away from this experience that can help you there.
Thank you both. Appreciate it. Moving on to action items for personnel. Six. Right. Correct. So motion to combine all personnel action items under Section 10 of the agenda. We have a motion and a second for that. Any questions or concerns?
Just a quick one for Dr. Sharp. The long-term sub who's resigning was my son's teacher this year, and I thought she did a really good job. And I've reached out to her. I know where she's going. I assume that the teacher that she was subbing for is coming back next year? Do you know the answer?
I don't. Mrs. King?
Yeah.
I don't know. I can't really say. I can, obviously, I can get that for you.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
A opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to action items for business. 11.1, the administration authorizes to execute an agreement with Montgomery County IU for the 1718 for discovery, education streaming, in the amount of $6,313.70.
I'd like to move to combine 11-1 through 11-6.
I'll second. So we have a motion and a second to combine 11-1 through 11-6.
Question on 11-1 and 2 in.
Question on 11-1 and 2 and any others that have increases. Is that considered, those increases within our current proposed budget?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any further questions, comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Moving on to 11-7, construction invoice. We're asking the board to approve the construction invoice for Potsgrove High School renovation project as presented.
Motion in a second. Rick?
You know. Does this finish? I don't know, there's, there's still a balance on this one. Did we just get this invoice? Is it a recently performed work?
At our last meeting, you approved a $45,000 change order. That is the bulk of this invoice.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
A question in connection with the construction. Are we, where are we, are we going to be doing a ribbon cutting, or is that just kind of...
Great question, Mr. Parker. We had talked about this in the fall, about hoping to get this thing done before the new year, and because of the concerns with construction and not really having a place that we felt we can open up to the public, you know, it just kept getting pushed and pushed. And I, I do believe we're at a point where we can, we can, you know, organize something like that. You know, we just, we just got to a point where we just had to say, we're not doing it this year because there wasn't enough complete, and we did not, we weren't going to show off a building that was not done the way we wanted it done, to be done. So, that's something I, I will commute with, you know, Mr. Nestor about, Mr. Carwell, and Dave, feel free to, I mean, if you want to weigh in on that, or Jeff, be happy to entertain. But we would definitely like to do something for the community.
End of summer, or, you know, before the school year starts, or...
I think we'd probably like to just like kick it off for the new year. Be more of a kickoff-type thing, just to celebrate the start of, start of a new school year and then, and then the new building. I think that would maybe go hand-in-hand with people's vacations and, you know, within our community. It might, it might be better to rally everybody together in early fall.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Seven to one.
Okay, 11.8, assessment, appeal, settlement, agreement. Bear with me. The district recommends to authorize Fox Rothschild LLP to enter into an agreement for the property located at 815 North State Street in Upper Potsgrove Township and further identified as tax parcel number 60-00-02911-008, setting the assessment of the property at $629,090 for school tax years 11-12, 12-13, 13-14, 14-15, $450,980 for the tax year of 2015-16, $468,340 for the school tax year of 16-17, and $467,500 for the tax year of 17-18 for each subsequent tax year until a change in the property assessment pursuant to applicable law. I should have.
So, I'll put it in as simple terms as I can, and then Mark can add if he, if he needs to, but this is the, the old giant shopping center that's filed for tax reassessment based on the fact that there's two or three stores left open in that shopping center. So, this represents the end of the process, where this has already been through the, the evaluation, and Fox Rothschild has gone to bat for Potsgrove and gotten us the, the best possible reassessment values. This is just the, the point where we need to approve the reassessment for the shopping center that's basically almost shut down now. So, does represent a decrease in revenue for the district. Do I have that right, Mark?
Absolutely, and the only thing I'll say is two things. One is, so the public's aware, there's three parcels, two are in Potts Town. This is only the Potsgrove parcel. And the other thing, I'll get on my soapbox and try to be brief. I know Dr. Scherf interviewed for the local press not too long ago, and this is a reason why we should continue to argue about what's called reverse assessment appeals, because if the center does go up in value, we want to be able to appeal or raise the assessment.
I would add that the, we, we got an email today from, from our representative at the MCIU who informs all the Montgomery County school districts quite well about legislative goings-on, and it seems like 12-13, the bill that would end the reverse appeal, is moving forward again largely because of a compromise that was offered up by the Pennsylvania School Board Association that is, would be horrible for everybody in Pennsylvania, because the compromise would, would force a school district to engage in a county-wide reassessment as the only means to re-appeal a situation like this. Let's say, in a year, three new stores move into that shopping center, and it's thriving again. Our only option would be to basically do a county-wide reassessment, which is not going to happen. So, it's a bogus compromise, and it's unbelievable to me that our representatives, our, the Pennsylvania School Board Association that's supposed to be representing us, offered this lame compromise up. It's, it's something that we all should be on our phones to our representatives about to, to fight, because there's nothing good about it, other than giving away millions of dollars to businesses and putting that burden on individuals. So, off my soapbox.
It was a good soapbox. So, with all that said, do we have any more comments or questions on this?
What was the physical address, please?
It is 815...
815 North State Street.
Thank you, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
11.9, the Potts Town Area Health and Wellness Foundation grant acceptance. We'd like the board to accept the grant awarded to the district in the amount of $42,581.88 from the Potts Town Area Health and Wellness Foundation.
We have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions? Mine only is to say thank you. We'll do our best to use it wisely, as always. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
11-10, budget transfers. We ask that you approve the budget transfers for May 2017 as presented.
Motion in a second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Co-curricular request. We ask the board authorize administration to solicit bids for sports-related items as presented. These purchases are to be paid by the existing Market Street sponsorship funds.
Motion in a second. Any questions or comments on this item?
One question. Were all departments that fall under Market Street funds potentially consulted regarding these decisions?
There's no such thing as falling under Market Street funds. I mean, the fact is that we can use Market Street funds at our discretion for most anything. We have traditionally only used them for one-time purchases with more of a focus on athletics and co-curriculars, because the, the funds themselves are generated by use of the stadium, for example, and the advertising that goes along with it. So, so I don't know that all departments or is relevant.
I, I would agree. I guess I can just add, because now's a relevant time. We were going to talk about this during our, our committee report out, but, yes, to point of fact, this money is available at the discretion of the board. Historically, and, and the way the athletics and co-curricular committee continues to support is, Mr. Durenzo works with the athletics organizations and the co-curricular organizations to determine needs that would fall possibly outside normal budget. They put a lot of planning. They have a, a short-term and long-term plan on what kind of funds are going to come in and where they're going to recommend that these funds be expended. I think they've been very responsible with that process up to this point, and I just ask personally that the, and I think the, the committee as a, as a whole asks that the board continue to support that process instead of us going and deciding where we should put these funds. They're, they have a process that they follow. It's a responsible process, and it's very well thought out and planned, so that's, again, the way we have done it, the way we ask, we continue to do it. But as, as Rick stated, this is, this is fund, funding that is available at the board's discretion.
Thank you. I, I ask because there's some talk a little bit ago about another department using some of the funds, so, but I fully support going as, as you state with the, through the committee, and I think that's a wise decision. Thank you.
Well, the other department in question was music, and in the past, we have also, even before I was on the board, approved targeted purchases for the music program as well. Typically, the, the purchases for them are expensive and one-time as well, so they sort of fit the criteria. And, you know, there, there, we, we don't have a plan for them from a budget perspective, or we often don't. So, that's where those other requests come from. If it was up to me, we would fund those other items, but, you know, I defer to the, to the general view on that.
Right. And all we would, all I'm suggesting is that we let it go through the, the process. Doesn't mean they're not available. They could go through the same process that these items did.
So, is there a natural communication already set where the music department is aware and can go to the, go to Gary or go to the committee with that? Are they part of that? I don't...
I think so, and as, as the committee met, we did have some initial discussions on how we can make that process better, to make sure that they do get there.
Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Moving on to action items regarding education, summer success staff. The district is asking the board to approve the recommended staff for summer success as permitted.
I'd like to combine 12.1 through 12.4.
I need to discuss 12.2. Or I could just ask the question, I guess.
Just ask the question.
Yeah, since we're doing it that way tonight.
If it gets approved.
Yeah. 12, yeah, we need to...
I'll second the motion. I'll second his motion. Go ahead, Bill.
On 12.2, the business conference, are the two attendees going to be attending the same sessions or different sessions?
There are, excuse me, there are certain general sessions that both of us would be attending, but there are concurrents, concurrent breakout sessions that we can split up.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Action items for policies. We're asking that the board approve the revised policies as submitted.
Motion in a second. The policies are number 204, attendance, and number 808, food services. Any questions or comments?
For the public's sake, can you just comment on the attendance policy in regards to, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we're going to come back to it after we do some research in regards to electronic?
Sure. So, the changes that we made to, or that we're recommending to policy 204 are based on revised requirements from the state. So, that policy was overhauled, basically, to come in, bring it into conformance with the new state requirements. We did tweak a little bit to, to make improvements that we thought for our specific needs at Potsgrove, but specific to what I think you were asking in the, our investigation into whether a written absent note is the only way to fulfill the, the requirement for reporting an absence and having an excuse versus an electronic. Yeah, so we held off on that, and we'll, we'll revisit after the administration has had some time to, to review other districts' policies and, and see if there's a way we can do things to streamline the process. Yep.
And, and if I may just add, obviously, there, there's a lot of effort put into this by the, by the board and by our people's service department, Spisito, our social workers and teachers and her staff. So, I, it, it really was a joint effort with this piece, and I, I do feel that it does have a flavor of Potsgrove in it. And what it does is, it does allow our administrators to have oversight and to basically have meetings before the meetings, if you will, so that when there are situations that do come up, the, the administrator, the building administrator can exercise his or her right to say, hey, I understand this particular student has had, you know, an illness, an extended illness, or has been out for certain reasons due to complications X, Y, and Z. So, it does, it's, it's something that we will review with our administrators before we come back for the school year, but I think that oversight and making an emphasis on that administrative oversight, to reach out and communicate that to our families will, will have, you know, reap dividends moving, moving forward. So, I just, I wanted to add that piece, because that was a huge, huge piece of that policy. So, thank you.
Yeah. The amazing thing is that in so, in one case, that, that change occurred by just changing the word "will" to "may." You know, so, I also think that, that even though the focus was, is largely on compliance with the new law, I think we definitely made some good tweaks to this policy that are on the road to our goal, which was, which should be to focus our efforts as it relates to attendance on real stu, on students who are really truant, not students who are just sick a lot. And so, I, I think we're moving in the right direction.
Any other comments or questions on these policies? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Moving on to miscellaneous action items. The board this evening had an opportunity to, to meet with three prospective candidates next year, for next year's student board rep. And what we want to do in, in the, in the, in the flavor of being fair to our candidates, the, what we would like to do is give Dr. Ziegler a chance to reach out to those three people who applied and interviewed, and then we will, we will table this motion until the 27th of June, and then we will make the appointments once Dr. Ziegler had an opportunity to share the, the board's results with the, the finalist. So, that will take place on the, in the meeting on the 24th. So, we'll table 14.1.
And we're also going to defer 15.1 for a JOC update, since we don't have Ms. Grimm here tonight.
Matt, what I was going to ask is, is it possible that one of the other two members could, this is now been like the third time we've skipped this.
Well, I would say anything's possible, but Mrs. Grimm is the one who comes prepared to give the report. So, with us not knowing that she wouldn't make it until today, I, I don't think it would be fair to pop it on either of you. not knowing that she wouldn't make it until today, I, I don't think it would be fair to pop it on either of you. If she knows in advance, I think it's fine for her to try to find somebody else, yeah.
Okay, moving on to committee items. What we're asking the board to do is accept the operations facilities committee meeting minutes from the May 19th meeting, I'm, I'm sorry, May 9th meeting as submitted. Three is reports. So, we, 16, 1 and 2.
Move to combine 1 and 2.
Motion to combine. Do we have a second? Okay. We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, so we just approved the minutes for the, for the meeting that we were going to report out on. So, I'm going to report on what those minutes said. Give me a chance to back up here.
They'll, they'll be on the next meeting.
Okay. I mean, it was the, it was the same two that we just talked about. It was the attendance policy and the, and the food services policy. So, our apologies. Yep, until next time. Second one to report out on is the athletics and co-curricular committee meeting. Being things that came out of that meeting were Mr. Durenzo's recommendations that we establish a middle school lacrosse team, boys lacrosse, as well as middle school volleyball, girls volleyball. So, as everybody knows, we, we established a high school girls volleyball team, and we already have a high school boys lacrosse team. We feel that it was important to establish middle school programs that would be good feeders into the high school programs. So, for the example of, say, boys lacrosse, we have a lot of kids, a lot of students starting their first year of lacrosse at ninth grade, which puts them at a disadvantage in the pack where other schools have middle school teams and, you know, gives them the advantage of having two years of, of lacrosse experience before they come into the high school. That's one advantage. The other that, that we think is more important is just offering more options at the middle school levels to give more students the opportunity to participate in things and, and activities after school. So, we're going to provide that opportunity going into next year, hopefully. I don't have the costs in front of me, but once I get the actual minutes, I can report that at, at a future meeting. The costs were fairly low. Of course, there's a one-time startup fee for equipment and things like that, but then maintenance yearly after that are fairly low and manageable. So, I think these will be great additions. The committee unanimously chose to support those additions, and so we'll move, we'll, we'll give Mr. Durenzo the direction to move forward with those plans if, if the board sees fit. I don't know if we need a motion to ask him to move forward, but I think he's, he's pretty far down the road with him. So, he's going to, we're going to have that on the agenda for approval in the future and at the, in the beginning of the school year. You can cut in if you got something on, on those two things.
Just suggesting that the one-time costs related to the startup of those programs, we should consider once again using Market Street funds for those costs rather than take them out of the budget.
Yeah, and I, I don't remember exactly what they were. I know they're less than what we have in the Market Street fund, so it would be able to be covered. Next, we, we did talk about the Market Street Fund and about how we plan, right, Gar, Mr. Durenzo presented again his, his short-term and long-term plans for what we need to do. It doesn't speak for all of the funds, but we did speak to the process. So, we don't have a plan in place, but what we asked was that we go back and we take a look at making sure that everybody has an avenue to get their needs considered for Market Street funds, and then they can go into the planning and come before the committee. And Mr. Durenzo and, and his group already do a pretty good job of prioritizing, but at least that gives us the opportunity to see them and consider them, make sure that they have a way to get access to those funds if needed.
I, I would, I would just like to add, I, you know, as a follow-up, that, you know, we asked Mr. Durenzo to come back to the co-curricular committee to, with specific numbers so that we could present that to the board because we're adding staff and we're adding a program. And one of the things that I asked my administrators to do, to hold off on this year because the, the budget, the budget train had left a station, is to come back in the fall so that we can have a better understanding of new programs and staffing needs as early as possible as well. So, I think I just, I just, you know, for due diligence sake, I think it's important that, that with these, with these feeder programs and, and giving kids opportunity to participate are important. Our future staffing in other programs are going to be just as important as well as we, as we move, move this train forward. So, I just wanted to, to, you know, continue how the board think about our future, our future decisions because every time we make a decision, there's a budget implication to that. So, I think in, in fairness to, to everybody, it's just something we, we must continually think about, you know, knowing that next year we're, we're 1-6 in the hole to start out, and we need to, you know, plan accordingly and really develop our philosophy early in the budget season with what our goals are, you know, for the, for the following school year. I know we're not even out of this budget season, but I think that we will best serve ourselves and our community if we continue to look ahead and think about the decisions that we make and how they impact us down the road. So, I, I thank you for just letting me take a minute because for me, not that I'm hypersensitive, but I am sensitive to the fact of, of the cost of doing business. So, thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Shirk. Real quick on some other items. The, we'll see this come in front of the board shortly as well within the next couple of meetings, but the, the administration and the teachers committed, or completed their annual review of the supplemental contracts. So, a few have, a few of those supplementals have been deleted for, I guess, lack of a better term, low participation or no participation, and they've been replaced with supplementals for newly established clubs and programs. So, going, going away are the high school dance team, the French club because we no longer offer French, La, La Cincina Espanola, which is a Spanish club, and the pep club. So, other than French, these other three clubs had not been, the positions had not been filled for the past three years. There was no participation in those clubs. Added for supplementals are the Reading Olympics in the high school, Reading Olympics at Lower Pots Grove Elementary, a newly established environmental club, the Envirothon, which I, I believe is a, a piece of environmental club, and the Lower Pots Grove Elementary School Morning News Program. So, these are new, newly added programs that need teacher support and guidance, replacing some of the old programs. Dollars and cents-wise, you know, these are, just every program is assigned a point value, every supplemental is assigned a point value. The, the previous cost was 27, 37, 92, and the new cost is 26, 18, 88. So, pretty close to a wash with, leaving us a little bit in the black, but I would just stress, not with our concern on saving the extra couple dollars. I think we added good programs that need good support. So, good work there.
What were we already doing, Reading Olympics, I thought?
We were, but it didn't have a supplemental position attached to it at the high school and at lower, I guess. Right. It's already happening, but we wrote it in, wrote it and added it to the books this year, so. Real quick update on, there was some talk about PIAA and their involvement in the scheduling for athletics. That was voted down. Basically, the PIAA would have taken over scheduling for our football games and other athletics. It was voted down, wasn't, wasn't by any means unanimous, but largely voted down by, by the athletic directors. So, we, we won't be looking at that as a change. It's a good thing. We would have lost some of our good inner-school rivalries and things like that. And last, the Pots Grove Athletic Hall of Fame is moving forward. They're going to go and start trying to develop a policy on that to bring before the policy committee and then eventually the, the full board for approval. So, that's where we are.
I'll take over for the curriculum committee. This in particular, what we did was more of a year-end reflection and celebrations. Pretty much what we had was, we had the curriculum department, we had the special education and pupil services, and the technology integration departments all give pretty much a heads-up of exactly all the different things we've actually accomplished and done throughout the entire year, and I'm not going to bring these up. There's a lot more. They did an amazing amount of work over the entire year, and you couldn't thank them enough for the, the amount of work they all did. Then the second part was the continuing part of the survey for the third language, as in we're trying to narrow it down and get into the nitty-gritty of the questions we're going to ask and the timeframe of when we're going to need these by so that we can actually see first if the community is looking to bring in the different things with the third language or possibly even an exploratory language and what year to bring it in. And then, of course, if they are inclined to do so, then we're going to have to start the procedures of incorporating classes and budgets and such like that. Thirdly, we went through a finalization, which was kind of, and I'm hoping we can get this included in the next meeting when we do the minutes, the chart that shows when we're going to do each subject for the curriculum reviews. So, what we tried to do, and this all goes to Daniel, of course, as in to making sure that we are going to go through the process of reviewing our curriculum, seeing exactly how the same process went this year, going through reviewing it, implementation, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And what we're going to do, the most important part was, we're going to make sure that it's all scheduled, one, to make sure we take care of our teachers and our students, and two, to make sure it stays within budget. So, that was the, one of the important parts of that discussion was making sure we stay on budget and we keep everything going forward. Lastly, although it wasn't part of the meeting, it was brought up, again, I'll say 100%. This is not approved yet. This was not part of our committee meeting per se. This is still up in Harrisburg, but it was suggested that the state is looking forward to moving away from and completely removing the Keystone testing, and that they are going to move to the idea of bringing in the PSATs and the SAT as the new testing for that area, obviously because of the SAT being the English, the math, the writing sections and such like that. Also, that would save a ton of money to the state. I think the mention was 1.3 billion dollars or so was the expense, so now this would obviously decrease that considerably. And that was a two-week process. This would actually be a one, maybe two-day process to get everything tested, and all students then would have another, that would actually be a free test for the students, as in now they're paying approximately $57. Boom, there's a free one just for them to take, just like they have taken the PSAT. All right? And that was how we went through with the committee meeting.
Al, can we put out somehow an email or something so people know who to contact in support of that bill? Get rid of it?
Uh, Bill, yeah, we, we can. I know I, I got correspondence from Senator Mensch that things are moving forward, and he confirmed, he confirmed that it's not a bill yet, but it has, it has mustered a lot of support. And one of the things that Senator, the Senator shared with me was the fact that, that there's support in, that both the Senate and the House, and enough senators to override a veto. So, they're pretty serious up there about getting this through, and there'll be more information to follow, but it's definitely on track. The word's out now. The word, the word got out, but we, we can, I can, we can put that out there, but it's pretty well-supported. It's not, it's not one, like the House Bill 1213, it's mez, mez support. This, this has, has the support, but thank you.
Sure, it would be nice if the governor focused his veto on 1213 as opposed to getting rid of the Keystone.
Okay, so with that, we'll move on to new business. Open floor, anybody?
I got two things. We made this little chart here. I want to thank, obviously, for the PTSA, who is the ones that actually created the graphics and everything like that. So, we're going to, I'm not part of the PTSA, but I guess because I'm a parent, I'm, I guess I'm involved with it. But we actually made this chart and everything like that, and I'm going to go over some of the little highlights for the senior class for this 2006-17, especially since we got the graduation ceremony coming up. None of the things I'm going to say would be even possible without the support and thank you to the teachers, the administrators, the parents, and everybody else that has gotten our seniors to this particular point. And then, of course, Dr. Ziegler, this is up to you if you want to put it anywhere in the guidance or anything like that. It's up to you, of course. A couple of the highlights that was given by the counselors was that we're going to have over 71% of our graduating class will be continuing their education at a post-secondary institution. Additionally, we have 29 graduating seniors that will have earned their certificates from the Western Center. Our graduates will be attending 54 different colleges throughout the United States, and we actually have, are going to have seniors that are serving four out of the five armed services. And lastly, we actually, our seniors have earned over $3 million in scholarship money to further their education. So, I think they all deserve really a big, warm hand of applause there for that. So, I'm going to give that to you. Second piece, the budget. There's a couple of things. I understand that we're getting very close to the budget time, and obviously, I always look at it as our goal is to get to 0%, and obviously, that may not always be achieved. We have rising costs. We have our mandates. We have our Peasers. We have a lot of different reasons why the budget is going to be very difficult to get down to 0%. Currently, I think we're at right around that $150,000 range left, and I, I would be surprised if we can find another way to squeeze any more out of that dime. I think we're going to be right at that $150,000. So, what I wanted to, I'm not making a motion or anything like that because I always wanted to have the board. I never make a motion. I always want the board to consider, and we still have the meeting, which will be the budget next coming up, is I want them, and of course, Mr. Nester can weigh in on this because he's the person that would be most responsible for it, would be if it's possible to use the $150,000 out of the Peasor budget to get us down to the zero part. Now, I just wanted to bring out a couple of numbers here. In 2015-16, when we had a budget, we started with a $2.5 million deficit. We ended up only having a .55% actual increase in the taxes. So, we went from like a 5%, 6% at the beginning, got down to .55. Last year, we started with a 1.7 million deficit. We ended it with a zero increase after it's all said and done. I understand next year, we are going to start with 1.6 is what we're already looking at, and if you went with my idea, 1.7, you know-ish, but I do feel that it's still possible to use that particular budget to get us there in the end. Also, if you want to look at the, how we've used the Peasor budget, right, in 2015, we originally budgeted for 750,000, didn't use it. We ended up having it as part of the surplus, and we put it back in. In 2016, we originally budgeted for $900,000. We've now decreased that to $375,000, and based off of discussions we've had in the past, in the few meetings we've had before- And based off of discussions we've had in the past, in the few meetings we've had beforehand, especially since Mr. Nester has suggested we were gonna use some of the money that we were saving from this year in certain areas to build and pay for the curriculum, we should again have another decent-sized surplus. I wouldn't be surprised if we're in the neighborhood of about, you know, a million dollars to two percent. I wouldn't be surprised. But of course, we don't know where we're gonna be, obviously, until the numbers actually shake out, so I'm not gonna put any numbers on you. This year, we're already saying we're gonna go for seven hundred and fifty. So my idea is to put, bump it to the nine hundred, get us to the zero percent for this year, and then see how everything shakes out, of course, for next year. We'd be at one point seven to start. We've been higher than one point seven, have done very well. So that's what I want the board to consider going forward into next meeting.
I just have one, uh, comment. Um, you mentioned, uh, two thousand fifteen sixteen when we raised taxes point five five percent. And, uh, you may even remember that I fought pretty hard to get it to zero. Um, uh, and the reason that I put forth that I thought it should be zero at that time was despite the uncertainty as to what the actual numbers we would get from the state, uh, would be, there was certainly reason to believe that the amount we had projected was lower than what we would actually get. And we argued about that at the time and went with the conservative estimate of, uh, I think it was a hundred thousand extra dollars. Uh, and it turned out that the less conservative, uh, number, which was the one that I was advocating, uh, proved to be true. It was four hundred thousand dollars. So we got three hundred extra thousand dollars beyond what we expected, and thus we could have managed to get to zero. Um, but it also then rolled into a surplus. This year, I think is different. Uh, the state is in, uh, serious deficit, uh, mode, and they're struggling to find the money to cover, to even to keep us level, let alone to give us extra money. So, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Nester, but, uh, but I think any expectation, just as I was very optimistic that year that we would get extra money, and my optimism proved correct, or lucky. Um, uh, the, I, I think this year, it's a different situation. And, uh, I'm much more pessimistic about what we might garner from the state. So while it's true that we have had surpluses over the last few years, one of the factors has been state funding, and I don't think that's gonna be in play here this year. Mr. Nester, do you have any comments on that?
Yeah, uh, just as a, a piggyback to your two thousand fifteen, uh, budget story. Uh, you might remember, we had a, uh, we didn't have a state budget until April that year, that following year. So while we got, while we got the money, we didn't know we were getting it until April, uh, of the following year. So it was, it was touch and go there for a while. Um, but incorporated in this year's budget is, um, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of additional basic education subsidy and seventy-five thousand of extra additional special education subsidy. That was what was, uh, reported out by the governor in his budget address. That was very similar to what came out from the House in their budget. But we haven't heard anything since either one of those, except that the shortfall this year is much deeper than they had initially projected. So, uh, as we move forward, we haven't had any, any discussions at Harrisburg at this point on where the budget might come. Hopefully, they'll start before our next meeting. But, uh, but the bottom line is, if you, if you wanna look at it, we have about two hundred thousand dollars of, of question mark in our budget right now, uh, that we're counting on. Uh, so just keep that in mind as well as we make whatever decisions we're gonna make going forward. Um, just to reiterate, I think, uh, Dr. Schur could provide you with some information, but our current, um, proposed tax increase would be about a point three nine percent, uh, tax increase, which for the, uh, average homeowner of a one hundred and twenty thousand dollars, uh, would be under twenty dollars a year. So, uh, for perspective.
And I totally understand to most people, twenty dollars probably to them would sit there and say, oh, it's just twenty dollars. To others, just like in my business, I get, they get a fifty cent increase in insurance. They're calling me up, yelling at me, saying, how come I increased to fifty cents? We're gonna get the same thing. We'll get this, if you, even if you raise it five dollars, they're gonna turn it around and say that we shouldn't raise it a dime. I would ask one question. You may, you would have obviously more experience with this, and when it comes to budgeting and such like that, how do budgets usually fare during election years, which obviously Governor Wolf is gonna wanna get reelected, I would expect? How would that usually affect school budgets?
The governor really has limited, it, it depends on how antagonistic it is between the governor and, and the legislature. This year, I think, uh, the governor's proposed something that's more, uh, vanilla, more acceptable, uh, to the legislature. So we weren't expecting a whole lot of, uh, of difficulty this year in getting the budget passed. Uh, but, uh, facts got in the way, and now, you know, we're here. Moving forward, um, you know, the Republicans are gonna want a Republican governor, and the Democrats are gonna want a Democratic governor. Um, and right now, the Republicans are, have more, uh, representation. So, um, I wouldn't be surprised if next year's is a more difficult budget, uh, than this year.
And the other thing I will add, uh, is, uh, I don't, uh, you know, the thing that was great about getting to zero last year is we did it without, um, using our fund balances to do so. No, we used nine hundred thousand, but that was planned. So that was, that, 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 that was, that was our planned deficit, uh, that, uh, that, uh, in which we accumulated a Peasers fund to, to account for, uh, predictable increases in our Peasers' costs. And, and so, yes, but, but that was, that was money that was already earmarked for that purpose. So I would say, no, we didn't go into our fund balances, um, beyond what was already planned to get to zero. And while, while, uh, I myself have managed in three years to never vote for a tax increase, uh, I'm fairly content with where we are right now, especially when, as compared with where we were at, uh, the start of this process, which, process which was well over three percent deficit, uh, three percent tax increase. And now we're down to point three nine. And while I don't like any tax increase, if we don't need it, uh, we do have to recognize that our costs keep going up and will continue to keep going up. And we can't, I don't see how we manage to, uh, to continue to operate effectively and, and improve our school district and cover our increasing costs if we don't factor in the, uh, the, those, the fact that those costs are going up and find a source. It would be nice if the source of those costs was the state, um, uh, rather than, uh, than our well-overburdened taxpayers. But at the end of the day, we are responsible for making sure our school district is appropriately funded. And yes, Al, we could possibly, uh, bat, uh, kick the ball down, downfield for, for a year um, uh, and get to zero again by using some of our fund balance, uh, or our Peasers', uh, fund. But at the end of the day, that's just gonna make the problem worse next year and in subsequent years. My recommendation is either we cut costs to get to zero or we just live with where we are because we've really come very far. That would be my personal preference.
And just the last thing I wanted to say before, obviously, uh, because again, this is just a discussion, it's not a motion or anything like that, was that we've planned to use the Peasor budget for multiple years and in the end, never needed it. So I don't think, if I could be wrong, I don't think we've had less than nine hundred thousand dollars in surplus yet in the last like five years probably, or at least three. So I would say that if I was saying something like Springfield did and they used twelve million dollars, I would not be in favor of something like that. Good luck for them, right? We're talking about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we approved nine hundred thousand this year. We're approving seven hundred and fifty this year. It would put us back to the exact same we approved for last year, which again, we're not using the whole nine hundred thousand dollars anyway. And again, we're gonna have a relatively large surplus again.
I would, I guess, I would just say that I think Rick mostly covered my thoughts on this too, but I feel like we need to give some direction tonight because we only have one more meeting and that, you know, we've already approved the proposed final budget. So if we need to make changes, they need to know tonight, but, um, you know, costs are going to continue to increase. There are both costs that we can't control that come down from man, through mandates from the state. Those are always changing. There's costs that we do have control over, but, you know, um, we, we have a, a great new teacher contract where we're, we're giving raises to the teachers. Other costs are gonna continue to increase, whether it's energy, um, or anything else. There's only two things we can do. Um, we can continue to cut to make things break even or we can increase our revenue to cover the increased costs. Uh, so our choice is to continue to borrow from the savings, whether it's Peasers or, uh, uncommitted general funds, and eventually those go away. So I, personally, I think it's not the best practice because we're, if we're gonna commit to borrowing to get to zero, borrowing from our savings to get to zero, and that's, that's gotta be predicated on the belief that at some point, our costs will go away or start to go down. And I don't think that's gonna happen, so eventually the savings account is empty. Um, I also think that there's not a school board meeting in this state or this country that you can't go into tonight and make the statement that our taxpayers can't afford any more taxes and the goal should be zero. I think that applies everywhere. Um, so, you know, that's, it's not to take away from that statement, but I think that's just generally accepted. That would be the best possible scenario, but I don't think that we can continue to get there every year. And I don't think we can continue to not increase our revenue while costs go up. It's just, the formula doesn't work long-term. So unless we get lucky somehow, and I, and I don't, I don't particularly believe in betting on that, which is, I think, the same thing I said to Rick when he was betting on the, uh, additional income from the state. And I wanted to go low and he wanted to go high. It's just, I'm not a gambler when it comes to that, so.
Yeah, we got hung up on the word bet.
Right.
With a couple of our, uh,
I just used it again, I'm sorry. So, um, with that, I, I've never been a zero person, although I think it's great when we can get there through, uh, reasonable means. I've always been of the opinion that we need to spend smart, get return on our investments, continue to improve the school district and provide them with the funding that they need to run efficiently and continue to improve. So, um, that's where I stand on as, you know, on the, the thought of, you know, borrowing from Peasers or any of our other savings accounts.
Just to clarify though, you would prefer not to even do the seven fifty then? And that, with that philosophy you just said, you would prefer to do our nothing?
Those are, that's budgeted planned spending for a fund that we set aside money for, for increasing.
You don't consider it the same thing?
No, I don't. Planned versus unplanned, no, I don't consider it the same thing.
I will say though, um, uh, now I'm talking on the other side, in, in deference to what, uh, Al is proposing. He's right that we've had surpluses for every year I've been on the board. This last one was pretty big. The one the year before was pretty big. And if, if I could look in the crystal ball and know that, uh, that we might have a surplus more than a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars, then I would personally be much more inclined to use fund balance to cover this deficit. Another option for us to consider, and one that, uh, the board that preceded, uh, me and Matt did the year before we were voted in, is they voted, uh, in a budget with an eighty thousand dollar deficit and turned out to have, uh, an over a million dollar surplus. And it wa, it, it turned out to work out just, uh, just fine. I would be more inclined to cut the budget that way by, by allowing to have some amount of deficit um, rather than committing to using our fund balance to cover it, although at the end of the day, that's what we would have to do if, if we didn't get, if we didn't get the surplus that we get every year. Um, but I think that the notion, um, behind that, this, uh, motion, um, uh, which was made by a former board president, was, was, you know, keep your pencil sharp, uh, throughout the year, uh, watch your costs. Um, and, uh, you should be able to cover that deficit through very careful spending. I mean, but from my perspective, uh, uh, every year it's been like that here in Potts Grove. And it's clearly becoming increasingly more difficult to find cuts. I mean, now, let's be, let's be honest with ourselves. We could cut a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars really easily, uh, but we would be cutting programs. And, um, I, I don't think there's any appetite on this board to cut programs. So, um, because, uh, also keep in mind, cutting programs means cutting positions and people's jobs. Um, so that, I think we're down to that. And, um, but as a compromise, I'd be open to, uh, to betting that we have, uh, do better than our, uh, our projections and allowing for a deficit as opposed to rating the Peasers', uh, fund. What that deficit is, you know, will of the board. Believe me, if I didn't have, uh, if, if, if I could, uh, could void a tax increase, I'd be a very happy person. But I don't wanna do it by, by going into fund balance. That's what the, the Taxpayer Association did way back in the early two thousands, and they almost bankrupted this school district. Uh, and, and then the result was a ten percent increase once, uh, the horror of what they had done, um, became, uh, became realized. And I just don't think that's, that's a responsible way to run a school, as much as I hate raising taxes. So, that's my take on it.
I, I do not, I do not know, but I, but we can't, just, just, just to, to follow up with Rick's comment, we, we don't have the, the ability to, to come back with a ten percent. You know, i- if, if we were that, if we, if we were in a position where we had, the best we could do was three-three this year, right Dave? That, that would've been the best. We, we could've been seven percent short. So seven times four hundred thousand, I, I know it's three ninety, but I'm doing some simple mental math here. We'd be two-eight and a hole. Two-eight and a hole. So, um, that, that's, obviously, that, that, that can, that, that overall picture concerns me. And I think, you know, you know, we've, we've challenged the business department to, to continually look at doing a better job of balancing the money that we have. And, uh, I do believe that they, they've done that. I mean, the proof will be in the audit report in the fall. And, and I think that will help us show a trend that we're doing a better job at budgeting with the money, the money that we have. Um, I, I just, I just think that, um, you know, there's a lot of things out there that we're gonna need and we're gonna want. And when I, when I look at, when I look at the budget, uh, I look at it as a, as a, like a forespoke process. We have to continually be wary of the tax increases we give our community members. We also have to continue to be, be mindful of our elementary constituents, okay? So that's the other piece. What kind of programs and, and do we offer and people do we offer? And then there's the middle school, okay? So what are we offering there? And then finally, the, the secondary or high school. So, you know, we have to look because if we decide to, and pardon my, go after if you will, or, or target a program or target people, then that particular group is going to be, have their concerns that they're gonna bring to us. So I just wanna continue to be mindful of, of our taxpayers, obviously, which includes all of us. You know, uh, that senior citizen taxpayer group, the fixed income people, this, the parents and the community that are in K-five, the parents in the community that are in six-eight, and the parents in the community that are at our senior high school, the, the nine, the nine-twelve. And continue to be thoughtful in our process. And I really feel we've worked well together to be thoughtful. Uh, the, the building administrators, our directors, um, you know, uh, you know, Dave and Ron have done a, a good job this year. And we'll be able to, if they did an excellent job, we'll find out shortly, okay? Because that, that'll be a self-reflection. We'll be able to, we'll be able, but they've done a good job putting us in position at the, at this point. So, um, you know, we're comfortable at this point three nine, you know, right now, uh, as a recommendation to the board for the final budget. But by all means, tonight, if this is something where you wanna go, then I, I would, I, I would like to know so that, that we can work toward getting this to where you want it and have it ready by the twenty-seventh. and have it ready by the 27th.
So can I ask, because we do need to give direction, do we have consensus tonight whether we want to rework the numbers to 0, either by carrying a, you know, borrowing partial and then carrying some, some deficit into the next year and, and banking on a surplus? Do we want to leave it as it is at .39? We need to, we need to give that direction now. My, my personal opinion is that we leave it where it is.
I agree. Leave it where it is.
Can you hear from Bill?
Yeah, leave as is.
I'd spot. I know where I was. That's fine. I'm still a 5, I don't know why you say yeah. I'm still a 5. We know where Bill will be. Bill will be with me, but I don't know where Patty will be. No, she'd be there. So it would, it would be a 6-3.
And I don't know the things, so even if I flip to the other side, I'm still a 5.
All right. We have, we have answers to previous questions before we wrap up here.
I'm sorry, do we have a consensus or not?
Yes.
There's been no motion or action to change the budget. It will be presented as is at next meeting.
I understand that, but the first thing was, do we have a consensus?
We haven't voted on it yet. You've heard there's no consensus for change. We're going to leave it where it is.
I haven't heard that, that's why I'm asking.
I've heard it from seven people.
I did not, because I'm over here without a microphone, so that's why I'm asking.
That's where we are. Six, I apologize.
I think, Mr. Slomek, I think that, that we're, we're pretty divided, but right now, we're keeping it at .39%.
Thank you so much.
Answers to previous questions, I, obviously, this was regarding Mr. Parker's inquiry regarding the Act 86 of 2016 that has evolved over the past year regarding diabetes and the, and the, and having someone other than a school nurse implement the diabetic procedures for, for the building or an individual student. We are in a position that does not affect us, we do not need to train anybody, we have a full-time school nurse plus part-time help, and we get help on, you know, regarding any trips that we take throughout the school year. So at, at this time, we're still waiting for some final, final information from the state, but we feel that when it comes to diabetics and measurements and, and issuing medication, that should be left up to the healthcare professional and not somebody who, you know, takes a mini-training or a webinar to, to do those things. So we've been fortunate at this point, I think it was more of a rural district issue, where they didn't have some of the supports that we have here, and at this time, it's not an issue for us, so I just wanted to share that out to the board.
Thanks for the follow-up, Dr. Shirk. At this time, do we have any other requests for public comment on non-agenda items from tonight? All right. Well, with that, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.